I'll go ahead and call the town council meeting for February fifteenth, twenty twenty, the order. And the first order of business is the invocation and the pledge.
Here with me. Dear God, thank you for the chance to meet freely and safely to discuss the business of the town. Be with us as we make decisions that they would be wise and just for all people. Thank you for the rain, for your providence, in your son Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And everyone should have received a copy of last month's minutes. Any comments, questions, corrections?
I move to approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty, minutes as presented.
I second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And I know Rebecca's off this week.
Yeah. She's on vacation, so she did have a report in your packets. I was not going to read through the whole thing, I guess a couple of budget. Budget requests were due on Friday, but she's not here this week, so we still have a few days. And then she'll be presenting draft copies of the budget on March ninth, and we have a council budget work session on March seventeenth. Did you have any questions on her report?
Speaking of March seventeenth, I do have a conflict now that just came up. Think we'll have a planning zoning meeting the day before that?
Yes.
We are, okay.
I believe we will, there's a couple items that are kind of ready to move forward.
Okay, right. We'll work it.
But we can have it in a different.
We'll see, let's get a little closer, figure it out.
So the financials were in your packets as well, if you have any questions?
Any comments, questions on what Rebecca presented?
I had a comment on the minutes, I know we just wrote it on there and I have a silence, so I'm still reading just to make sure. The water tower design. Says it, the motion passed unanimously, and I voted no.
Okay, I knew you'd. Yeah, okay, I didn't.
I think.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't know if it was no or abstain, but double checking and correcting, yeah. Thank you.
Christie, you didn't abstain on that?
No, didn't catch that.
We'll go back and double check and correct it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I abstained on the next.
Any questions on Trezor's report? Okay, planning.
Jadeveen isn't here, she's been out of meeting last month, and there's not one scheduled for this month. Kind of had a lull in where projects are, there's so much in actual construction now, we kind of got through the busy time for that. But I think we'll be ramping back up with meetings, probably starting in March.
And we've got Corporal Nelson with us today, got her reported. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Corporal? Nope, okay, any questions for her and comments?
I see somebody was busy with vehicle stops, sixty.
Okay. Thank you very much, then we'll move on to Town Minister Trezor's report.
The first item is to award the Leonard Town Beacon Newsletter contract. On January ninth, twenty twenty, a legal ad requesting bids for the printing of the Beacon Newsletter was published in the County Times and the Saint Mary's and Calvert Editions. We also contacted the three printing companies that have bid in the past to tell them it was out for bid. The contract is for one year with two one-year extensions. We did receive two bids, Barefoot Graphics decided not to bid on it. Heritage Printing and Graphics bid and the Printing Press, they were within fifty dollars of each other. Printing Press has been printing it for the last several years, and they held their price that they've been doing. The difference, we're recommending the Printing Press even though it's fifty dollars per issue higher. But the reason, they also calculate the postage, they sort it and take it to the, to the post office, all we have to do is take a check. So that's really something that is imperative for us because we don't have somebody to go haul those all to the post office and everything. So the difference in price certainly more than makes up for that. It's also a lot easier working locally with somebody close by. It's, it's a whole different, at Heritage now, it's a whole different staff than we used to, they used to do the newsletter for years. But once they moved to Waldorf, it's a whole different staff, and it's just a lot easier to work locally.
Our staff's busy as it is, this takes a lot off the staff by having them do it.
For fifty dollars, and like I said, they do extra things, so it's not like, it's costing a bunch more.
All right, I move to award the Leonard Town Beacon Newsletter contract to the Printing Press for a one-year term with two one-year extensions.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, further discussion?
Did we, did we ask Heritage Printing if they would do that other stuff as well? Just, just wondering.
Well, they would have, if they deliver something to us, it's an extra fifty dollars. Because there's been other items that we pay for them to like put the sign, they won the bid for the signs for the LBA, for the directory signs. So it's an extra fifty dollars to get them to come down and do anything like that.
Well, that makes up fifty bucks.
When they were in town, that was a different story than up there.
Sure, yeah, just was wondering just to make sure they were, but that, if that's the case, then, then they're basically.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
So the next item is also a bid for the portable toilet contract for the events. On January sixth, a legal ad requesting bids for the rental of portable toilets for events was published in the County Times, also the Saint Mary's and Calvert Editions. TNT Portilet was the only one that requested a packet, so we just received the one bid. Their price is actually less than the previous bid. That can be because of adjusting number of toilets, but they have held the price since twenty seventeen, and this bid is actually less. And they do a really good job, they're, they're very cooperative and, and you know, if we need something new, they certainly accommodate it.
Very, very responsive. Comments, questions?
Is there a bid attached to this or no?
No, I didn't, I have it if you want to look at it, but it's, it's. It's by event.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, you're welcome to look at it if you want, I did do a comparison today. Last year's was six thousand one eighty, and this year's fifty-four eighty-five, so it went down significantly. And then some of these get passed on to other, like the car show pays for theirs. So within our budget, we will be having, the ones that we actually pay for will be by line item in there.
Okay, yeah, I just saw there was an attachment, I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it.
Oh, no, that was originally, Beth had done the bidding for both of these, and she had attached a write-up, and I ended up incorporating it into just the page. Sorry about that. Yeah, Beth's been doing all the bids, so it's nice.
Any further questions?
All right, I move to award the portable toilet contract to TNT Portilet for a one-year term with two one-year extensions.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
The next item is a liquor license letter of support for the annual Leonard Town Spring Crawl. So we've been working with the local, the restaurants for the concerts and changing that up, we're going to be trying to do one packet. We're kind of changing the way things are, are going to be done this year. But the bar crawl, actually, the spring crawl, will actually be taking place, they need to be on the agenda earlier than adding it to that packet, so we're kind of handling it separately. And the request is actually a little different than what the concerts are going to be like as well. So, and, and the, the request is to close the Upper Square. And the Rex and Antoinette's Garden would have a, an extension of premise, which would make a larger area for seating outside, and it would be enclosed. And then Social on Fenwick Street, some of the businesses, and also not just Social, want to close Fenwick Street as well, and do kind of a block party in that area. But the only one serving alcohol in that area would be Social, so they're requesting an extension of premise also. The pub is participating, but right now they're talking about just using their existing extension of premise, not doing the full-blown, putting the fencing up and everything. And I guess Joe Curly and Sean are here from, Sean from Social, if you have questions, anything I missed, Joe?
Uh, no.
So I had a meeting last week with the Sheriff's Department, talking about the concerts, but also this event. They really had a concern with blocking Fenwick Street. They, they're adding a lot of requirements to the events, including the spring crawl and the concerts, that are really going to add a lot of cost. So we're kind of trying to work through that issue. But for this one, to have police support on Fenwick and the Upper Square, they're saying they need eight deputies at a cost of four, about four thousand dollars. But they're, they think they need four deputies on Fenwick Street and four in the Upper Square. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I think we need to have that discussion as well about the concern for closing off Fenwick Street as well.
Just as clarification, we would not be footing that four thousand dollar bill, right?
It would be up to the businesses who are doing the event to pay for those deputies. We just do for town events. It's not specifically a town event.
Joe, the last couple of years, how many people have actually attended? I mean, I know it's hard to tell, but I mean.
Yeah, I would say fifteen hundred, somewhere around, I mean, Facebook usually shows about two thousand people, RSVP.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, if you add up all our fire marshal seating capacities, it doesn't seem like, I mean, we're one seven six, plus ninety-nine, from the front porch is your helmet. Right, nobody's really going so far above their capacity, so it's not, I don't know.
I guess where I'm going is, you know, we, when we close down the entire street for like the tree lighting, we're talking ten thousand people.
Right.
I'm not sure it's, everything's needed for fifteen hundred people to.
Right, well, the, I think the idea was.
Now, you're, you're having a couple bands out on the square.
We would like to, we would like to make it a little bit bigger, I think the last few were a little anticlimactic, you know, we called it a crawl. And here we have, I think people are just kind of catching on, and it's basically another, another day in Leonard Town.
Right.
You go from place to place, and, but you know, it's good, and we like that. We're, I think the way this came to fruition is, a lot of the events we have can put a damper on the restaurant, you know. Some, some do well, some don't do well, this one has been amazing for all of us. I think the first couple, we were all breaking records, and we saw it as something we could grow on, and something that would be good for all of us, and we were looking forward to it, and we met with all the restaurants last week. And everybody's excited, I think the pub, they might be asking for an extension to it.
Yeah, I don't think he's decided.
Yeah, he, he didn't know what it was going to require for barricades and whatnot, so. But, yeah.
Okay, so my point is, it's, it's not a huge crowd that normally comes to this.
It hasn't been huge.
Right.
This is, this is what, the third year?
This is the third year, we've had a fall, a spring and a fall for the last two years.
Oh, okay.
And Sean, who did, who all wanted to participate on Fenwick, do you know?
So we've got Escape, Border Brush, Fenwick Street Books, and Bourbon and Bo's all want to be. And, you know, we discussed in the past, I think we've even had meetings with Mary and stuff about doing Fenwick Street parties and, and trying to, you know, one of the main reasons for us also doing this is to, you know, to really put it out there about the walkability of Leonard Town. There's nowhere else around that, that could do something like this, and why are we not leveraging this a little bit more to, to benefit everyone as a whole? And also, one thing that we kind of, you're really looking forward to, the date that we have set for this is right after the First Responders First Friday event. And we are using this as a way to raise money for the First Responders as well.
So I, I think the idea was to have First Responders at the event, and they would be doing collection, like a boot collection kind of.
Where will the First Responders be set up, do we know that already, like, are they going to be in the Upper Square, or what part of the town?
The means we've had are very primitive so far. Our idea was just to have them out and about, and I think the last meeting we had, we were hoping that maybe they could do more of the raising money themselves, so it wasn't going from our hands to their hands, they could be right there, and whether we decide to just take donations up door, charge it cover, things like that, we could incorporate that with the whole event and turn it over to them.
Right, okay.
So, going here, it says, we have the Rex and the, and Antoinette's Garden are requesting an extension of premise into the Upper Square, is that to the whole Upper Square? So like closing off the whole?
Right.
And then people could walk around freely, just trying to understand.
No, no, no.
Okay, can't, right, so Joe would have an extension of premise, and he would have a perimeter.
Like to the sidewalk, okay, just making sure.
And so not, not walking around with alcohol, no.
Okay, so just up to the sidewalk.
Well, actually, we're, we're looking at for concerts also coming on out into the street for all the restaurants, to have additional seating for anyone who wants to come and watch the concert, have dinner. But they'll have enclosed areas.
Gotcha.
Which is going to be a requirement of the liquor board.
And then, Joe, that would be monitored by your staff, correct? You'd have bouncers there?
Yeah, we plan to have our own security staff and our own barricades, and really, the footprint that would be about as wide as our building that goes out into the street, we would monitor ourselves, so it's just like having a little bit bigger of a.
Right.
Establishment for the day.
Which all the restaurants are interested in for the concerts, extending and have premise. So each one will be responsible, but for this, I think it's just the two right now.
Yeah, we haven't talked to Louise.
Right, so possibly, so in, in the motion, if we approve it, I just said for the ones that participating, participating businesses, we would support the extension of premise unless we modify that. Because the pub will need an extension if they decide to extend, Social would, the Rex, Antoinette's, and if Dos Amigos decides, or Sweet Bay, or anybody.
So really, the decision today needs about the, need, is simply about the extension of the premise, so they can get a liquor board, correct?
Well, we, we also need to decide if we're going to allow the Fenwick Street closure as well, because that is going to be dependent on how the liquor license letter is for.
Right, right, okay.
What, what's the issue with closing Fenwick Street? You said somebody had an issue?
I think, look.
The police that felt that they were going to need eight deputies if we have both enclosures. They also want more substantial barriers, not just cones, not just the accordion barriers, they want actual barriers filled with water, and cars across the road, or dump trucks, or fire trucks, or something.
That, that was one of our hopes with the First Responders, that maybe they would help provide a, you know, something to block the road off, AKA fire trucks.
So the businesses fund this, and they've already agreed to pay that four thousand or that's.
We just found out about how much it was going to be, so that's another hurdle that we have to get over, is how that's going to be funded, if it's worth it to the businesses.
Yeah, but it wouldn't, would not be us.
Right.
Right, I was just more getting shit.
Well, like I said, we just had a meeting on Thursday, it was a long meeting, there, we went back and forth a lot, but I mean, it started at like ten deputies for anything, pretty much, and I mean, that's just unrealistic.
Yeah.
And we can't afford that either, so we're trying to figure out how to make it safe, and, and you know, how many do we really need? And start off maybe with more that could go home if things aren't as big as what we think.
Right.
So, that's a, something that we're working through with the Sheriff's Department, I don't have an answer to that right now, but what they're saying right now is eight deputies, barriers, and they're not.
And they know this timeframe from, basically closed from, start closing at probably eleven?
No, one o'clock is when we close the roads.
Okay, start closing at what?
The event starts at two.
Okay.
The event ends at ten, and the roads would be reopened by eleven.
So.
Which is another issue with the barriers, like how you get the water empty to get them out of the way, I mean, it's, it's, it's a definite change to what we've been doing.
So if we approved and the businesses didn't pay for the cops, or the police, then we would just modify our support letter, or would it have to come back for our support for another letter, that's the part I was trying to figure out how.
No, you can approve the letter of support for the businesses that are going to participate, and then, that's how I wrote the motion. So if only certain ones participate because they can't afford to close the whole, all the streets, then I would just do letters of support for the ones.
Okay.
Okay.
Have there been complaints, or was there a problem with any of the events that we've had so far?
No, no.
What was the, the Sheriff's Office present at, at those events?
Well, it's usually Christie, if it's, for concerts, you only had you, right? Like First Friday was usually you, and then the other ones, it's usually two or three, depending on how big we thought it was going to be. And we're thinking there's two large concerts, which like I said, we're going to be addressing that separately, but we weren't really ready to move that forward. But there'll be a couple larger concerts that we're, that they're saying they need four deputies, and we know it will be a larger concerts, we'll probably modify the, the whole BYOB issue, and so, I mean, we're just trying to work through all those issues. But if you remember, last year it changed, we didn't use to pay for the deputies, other than Christie's salary and over, her overtime. But we started, they started charging, the Sheriff's Department did, all the different organizations for, they gave us Veterans Day and Christmas on the Square, which are two huge numbers, but for the rest of the events, beach party, we're, we're going to start paying for deputies for those.
It's not just us, it's other events, county too.
Redaction of parks and everyone. So, so it definitely makes a difference now, much more, like how many deputies we, we need to have. But we want a safe event, and that's all they want as well, and they feel like it's been understaffed in the past. And they don't like the idea of just using cones, they really want some type of more substantial barrier.
If, if it like rains and we end up not having the event, do we still have to pay for the deputies, how does that happen, how does that work?
No, it's just however many hours they're here.
Okay.
No, all these barriers, we don't have there, right, we would have to purchase?
Or rent, or, I mean, at some point, if this is what we're going to be doing, we're going to have to look at buying something, but for right now, I mean, first, we talked about concrete barriers in the heart. There's no way we have a way to move those. So then we went to the water-filled ones, and we have used those before, so I know someone has them around, so.
But, but for this particular event, since it's First Responders, we're going to try to use their vehicles to, to be the barriers?
We haven't actually submitted that request, and that was just in, in conversations that we've had through our contacts with them, this, a possible hopeful scenario that, you know, we're scratching our back and you scratch ours, help us block the road off with a, and also, I think it kind of gets a little bit more, you know, interest.
Visibility.
Visibility for what we're doing with raising money for them when they actually see their, their units there.
I mean, one of the things I talked about, what we, what we had talked about at the meeting, and I relayed that to the Sheriff's Office, was like, for instance, the wing wagon, using that to block a road, and I don't really, the dump trucks, it's not conducive to the family that we have. But they say that's not an approved vehicle to block the event, they need to have a deputy with it, so it needs to either be a dump truck, a fire truck, or a police car.
I think going forward, we could probably, you know, move and groove and talk to some different people and see, you know, the feasibility of this whole thing. I was hoping today we'd just get the extension of premise and have that ready to roll with the liquor board, and then, who knows, this might not be feasible at all. We might say, thank you for the letter of support, but after looking at how much it's going to cost for the police, how much it's going to cost to find ways to close down the road and everything, it's just not feasible, so I think that would be the next phase. Asking to get going on our plan.
Okay, so if we approve the, the letter of support just for the extension of premise, then next month we can decide what's going to be closed down, or what, wherever?
I mean, when you go to the liquor board, they're going to want to know what streets are going to be closed down, correct?
Yeah, their, their liquor board is going to request, like, they want to see entries and exits, show how it's blocked off, like, they're going to, for them to grant, for alcohol to be able to be served, they're going to, we're going to have to meet their level of expectation for that as well. At this, what we need in order to go in front of the alcohol board is just the town saying, we would allow this to happen on Fenwick Street and Square. If all the other, you know, Ts and Is, you know, were done, you know, if we figure out the, you know, sheriff's costs, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. We just need to know before we go to the next step and see how much more effort is worth us to put into this, if, you know.
So it's a Saturday, correct, yes, so, and in the afternoon, so most of the businesses on Fenwick Street close at two, I think we talked about. Like the dry cleaners, so the traffic flow, the post office, that traffic would still flow. They'd have to take a right and go up Fenwick Street and go the long way around, and then anything coming up from Courthouse, you know, they'd have to use Courthouse and go around. So traffic can flow, it's, it's more complicated when Fenwick Street is closed, but it, you know, it can work. And it can keep the, the lower square open for that traffic. People could do a U-turn by Bank of America, they can still go to all those areas. It's just more complicated, people coming in Fenwick Street, they're going to have to come up Courthouse Drive and loop around.
So what, what's the plan to be done, to do down on Fenwick Street, other than extending your premises out to, to the street?
Just, you know, we have a bar that, so we've, we've done two events so far, last year, for essential promiscence, and we placed the bar in, in Fenwick Street, and, you know, done various drinks that kind of coincide with our theme. But what we really wanted to try to do differently than we've done for, you know, that was beach party, and the other, that was Christmas on the Square.
Okay, so like that.
One of the reasons why we started doing that is because it's, it's a struggle sometimes to pull people down Fenwick Street, and, for any of these events. And so, you know, some of these other businesses that are popping up, like, you know, Bourbon and Bo's and stuff, if they want to, you know, try to start this little Fenwick Street block parties where, you know, they actually pull some of their merchandise out of their stores, and they, they have little stands set up, and I know like Fenwick Street Books, they wanted to have like some board game stuff going on in the, in the street with, you know, stuff tying in with what they do there. Escape wanted to maybe have some like massage chairs out and doing, and like, just an opportunity for, for us, for people to walk around, have a drink, and experience what each of the, the businesses are really trying to do.
I, I think when things get a little blown out of proportion sometimes when alcohol is mentioned, I mean, our concerts are very family-friendly. I, I, it's not a big, it's not about the alcohol, we are talking about moving them to Sunday afternoons, at the request of the businesses. So, I mean, I, I don't think it's really the point, it's, it's not a big drunken brawl, you know. But sometimes when, you know, it's really more about. Um, but sometimes when, you know, it's really more about the eating and the dining opportunities expand, extending the premise, but the alcohol has to go to the liquor board and, so things kind of get pictured as something maybe that they're really not. Um, so, sometimes just getting through the first year, I think there was a huge presence for the first barn crawl of um, police and then the, the second year, they cut it way back because they saw it really wasn't what they were fearing it was gonna be, so. It's just, we're trying to, you know, experiment with different opportunities and really working, we've met a number of time with, with the restaurants and trying to figure out how the concerts work for everybody, um, so, it's really growing pains.
And the, the extension would or would not include the square itself?
The upper square.
The upper square?
Yes.
It would include the upper square?
Upper square and Fenwick Street.
But they can't walk around with alcohol?
Right, it's just confined to whatever area, Anthonet's Garden and the wrecks and the square, and then if anybody else decides to participate, they would have their own enclosed area and that's the only place that they could have alcohol.
I think it sounds really nice to have um, even the separation because you could have like people with families maybe more down on Fenwick Street playing the games and doing, you know, whatever, I don't know, hula hoops or whatever it is that they're gonna have there, and then you're gonna have the people that are maybe more alcohol ori- alcohol oriented, more toward the bars and toward the band, I think it sounds nice that there's kind of an opportunity for both pe- for people to go two different ways.
Yeah, the liquor board, the only thing they really requested from us is that no two businesses are side by side with our um, blocking off our areas so that, you know, you couldn't theoretically reach over to another extension of premise and just geographically the way things are laid out already, that already works with all the restaurants and everything.
I say that's not an issue.
Yeah, we recently did a scale drawing so we could really figure out, especially for concerts, because we have more restaurants that are gonna want an extension of premise. So uh, they can have a pretty large area and still have twenty feet of separation, I mean, and still have room for people to mill around that aren't going to that restaurant.
Right.
They could all work out well.
Yeah. Yeah, I think being a Saturday, it's, it's probably, you know, a good time to try it.
Yeah, I think so.
And have we run this by the fire department? I mean, closing down Fenwick or?
No, I mean, there will be meeting with them about um, you know, participating, I think with them being part of it, hopefully we'll have more support and.
They're made aware of every.
Every event, yeah.
Every event, uh, well, obviously, you know, so, yep.
I mean, for those hours, they'd have to go out, Lard's Avenue. So they'll be able to come down through the square.
So then again, just make sure I understand, if Fenwick Street is closed, then the businesses are responsible for paying for, for additional deputies?
Four for the upper square and four for the Fenwick Street is what the Sheriff's Department is saying right now.
How, how does that work? Do they pay it, fans or they send them a bill?
They pay them at the day of the event, they have um, checks or cash for the deputies, they're off duty.
Okay.
Deputies. And actually, this, in this case, the Sheriff's Department has, the sheriff has to approve this as well, which is another hoop for the off-duty deputies to do this. For our events, it's kinda automatic. I mean, I, you don't really need to make a motion, I just, we needed to have a discussion about it, if everybody's in favor of doing the Fenwick Street ex- part, or trying to explore that as well, the motion really is about the letter of support for the liquor license work, but it would, would be for areas on Fenwick or um, for this upper square, and then if the pub decides to do something more, they would be included in this as well. But they would do something similar to what they do for their anniversary every year.
Yeah, right, I guess my only concern is, you know, I mean, I support all the businesses in downtown, you know, do whatever I can to help them, but are we going too big, too fast by shutting that much down? The upper square and Fenwick? I mean, you're saying like fifteen hundred people? And it's closed for what, ten hours? It's just an idea, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not saying I'm.
I could throw this out there, um, if, if uh, what happens is pay for that many deputies, uh, we're gonna hope for more than fifteen hundred people.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just if you, um, so that's two hundred dollars an hour roughly, uh, for Fenwick Street, uh, that's a decent amount of, we, we need a decent amount of people, I, I, we, the two largest events that, you know, you know, Joe and I worked together a lot for the past couple of years, and every time that we do something just on our own, um, to tie in with the other restaurants, it always is a huge success. Like even uh, we did a tapas crawl, uh, where we just did appetizers at each place and it just brought in huge numbers, we couldn't, we couldn't keep up with the amount of people. Uh, we were actually hurting a lot of feelings because, you know, we were, had so many people show up to this stuff. Um, but at a certain point, it's just, it's like, well, how is it really a, a crawl? What, what, what is there that you're doing any differently than any other day? And uh, really, we're not, so that this, we just, you know, and I think a lot of you guys probably remember like some of the Maiden Rifle, the, you know, the, the town renovation stuff and it, and one of the big key parts that they were talking about is exploring the walkability of the town and even like shutting down Fenwick Street and putting up those little pylon, like the little inserts that go into the, into the road so that it's very easily shut down and you don't have to worry about bringing in huge dump trucks or whatever it is. You're just trying, you know, so this is just kinda like a, hey, let's, let's try it, see what happens and, and go from there. And the, the last few that we've been building up to that I think is showing that we've been doing it in a responsible manner and it's really, it's, it's helped. You know, and like I said, for some of the events that hurts us, we're, you know, we're, and let's see if we can find one that helps us.
We're also competing against a lot of other areas in Southern Maryland with spring festivals and beer fests and everything else and this is our chance to go head to head with all those other places.
Right.
Well, I think and, and when I met with the Fenwick Street team last year, they were just talking about doing Fenwick Street, doing the block party for them, and I think having the, the rest of the, the upper square involved too, that's just gonna bring more people and be appealing, like I said, to more people. I, I could see you bringing a good number of people in.
Uh, last, um, last year for the ball call was our number one largest day in revenue that we had for the entire year was on that day. And um, so, and that's just the little coffee shop, you know, just the, just the number of people that came through there just to check out and see what was going on. So I, I do think that it, and like I said, all the other businesses on Fenwick see that, and they wanna, you know, they wanna be a part of it as well.
Any other comments, questions?
Any reformation?
Yeah, I was gonna say, is anybody uh?
Yeah, I move to send liquor license, uh, liquor license letter of support for the participating businesses for a one-day extension of premise for May second, twenty twenty, the total setup and event time would be one P M. to eleven P M.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, good luck.
Good luck.
We'll see how it goes and hopefully everything's good.
We need it to go well, because the concerts probably will end on that as well. Um, uh, the next item is really disinformational, the Maryland Heritage Area Grant, um, we talked about, we had the opportunity to possibly down the road getting a, a historic paddle boat to operate events out of the wharf. Um, just, we've been looking at different pots of money for that, we sent a letter to the governor requesting it in his budget, we um, have a, have sent a letter of intent to apply for a hundred thousand dollars from the Maryland Heritage Areas, that had to go out in January, but we'll be working on the grant application, just trying to piece together that opportunity that we had talked about. So don't test it for information. And the next item is Sweet Bay Restaurant, um, outdoor seating, um, so this is um, the council approved outdoor seating for Sweet Bay at the August twelfth um, meeting, utilizing two of the existing parking spaces, at the time the owners did not have the funds to build a permanent structure. They would now like to build a permanent structure instead of a temporary, which we made in the motion that at, at least it was a temporary structure. So we just wanted to come back and, and um, reiterate that, that it would be a permanent. The cost of the temporary structure is gonna be in the five thousand dollar range, and the permanent's about thirty thousand, so um, didn't wanna just do it, they didn't wanna do a temporary and then have to re-spend that money. Um, so I put a sketch in your packet so what, what kind of the area would look like and how the pedestrian traffic would still flow on the sidewalk. Also, the discussion from the minutes of the August meeting were in your packet. Um, so, just really, um, we already approved the outdoor seating, so this is really just about um, a permanent structure um, instead of just a temporary platform.
And, and this would actually be curving and then the um, the um.
Brick pavers.
Brick pavers.
And it would look like the other end?
Right.
And then this, the circles are like lights?
Um.
Light.
Posts.
Posts to be able to have string lights on?
String lights.
Okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Or it could.
Once this is a problem, I have a better setup, excuse me, get exactly what I'm saying.
Gotcha.
If I want to put some, one of the umbrellas are gonna get out, kind of off from it, so.
Mm-hmm, sure.
I think this will look very nice there, and one of my biggest things is that stop sign, I want moved, so now I guess we can move it, because it's like right there, you can hit your head on it, so when you walk down the sidewalk. No, they look very nice.
This certainly is, was a recommendation of, on the downtown plan, so it's, it's pretty much what they were recommending.
I noticed that the uh, the dimensions of it um, extend a little further than um, the edge of y'all's building, um, have you spoken with the, um, the neighbors about?
It lines up with the sidewalk, which the town owns the sidewalk.
Uh, I, I.
So I'm just gonna extend right through, I guess I, I mean the other direction, um.
What's that, Antoinette's Garden?
Yeah, that's the Denison.
Yeah. The wine bar there extends a little bit further in front of that.
Well, it's just two spaces, it's, it's, it's just taking out two spaces, which was what we were. But we already approved.
Exact, it's the exact angle of that second space.
I guess you could straighten it off.
I have one more, we have the business, again, the building next door.
I was gonna say.
Who lives enough space there?
Right.
Oh, you guys are the building next door.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah. And, and other questions, comments?
No, so, I move to approve the construction of a permanent outdoor seating area instead of a temporary platform approved at the August twelfth, two thousand nineteen meeting in front of Sweet Bay Restaurant, the construction would be completed at the expense of the restaurant.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, um, the last item is um, outdoor furniture for the square, so when um, Councilmember Hollander was in South Carolina last year, she sent us all a picture of some beautiful swings that um, she saw down there, and really was interested in doing them in the square. Um, so I've been working with Bill Wood under our lawn care contract, he's been working with a guy that, an Amish builder, Wesley Stauffer, that does a lot of um, uh, outdoor furniture for him, for Bill, um, at Reiken, he, he's done projects for Reiken and um, some other projects for Bill. Um, so he had him design a double swing for the pocket park in the square by, by, um, we, we call it Genius Park. Um, and um, the estimated cost is between five, fifty-five hundred and six thousand dollars and, and um, some, we have already identified some funds that aren't gonna be used in this year's budget, we know that um, we have, our um, um, overage is gonna be a lot more because we brought in more taxes than, than we in budgeted, so I, I think by the end of the year, we'll be able to, to, to find most of the funds, um, if not all of them, um, out of this budget year. The way the Amish work, um, they get really busy after February, he said he could build it in February if we moved it forward now, and so we would be able to actually have it in place in um, in, in the spring. And um, Bill Wood is actually gonna donate two Adirondack chairs that would um, be built by the same gentleman. And the pricing that I've seen, because I do have some budget money left over, I was thinking of trying to get some other um, Adirondack chairs for the square area on the budget that we just did for the landscape improvements, and the pricing that I've seen, that his prices on the Adirondack chairs are really good as well, so. Um, so Bill is gonna donate two of those, so it'll really start pulling in uh, what the downtown plan talked about, uh, with the other work that we've done.
Just for clarification, when you said uh, uh, budget overage, the income will be over, not the, not the expenses.
Exactly. Well, we have defined, um, we know there's a lease, I, I, I've already identified uh, twelve hundred fifty dollars on another line item um, that isn't gonna be used, and like I said, we'll, we know that we're, the income is gonna be greater than what we had budgeted.
Does our lease, would that parcel allow us to put the, I mean, would this be considered a permanent structure?
Um, it could certainly be removed, yes, the lease is, is very open, um, but um, if we end up losing the lease at some point, the swings could be moved and the structure could go somewhere else.
How long is our lease good for now?
It's, it's just a year by year.
Every year, okay.
I mean, we haven't even, it's never been.
Haven't talked to them in years.
It's not over here, but we are like deficient in paying them. No, I mean, it's just not really, it's not a thing.
Better cough up our twelve bucks.
But someday, I'm sure the family is gonna wanna do something back there, so, but I think the structure could certainly be easily, not easily, but it could be moved and maybe at the wharf, but now Christie.
Yeah, I know this is my trial room, I'd love to see them, where these are, um, where my little brother lives, on the other side is their wharf and they, they run along the whole wharf area and they're always filled up with people, it's, it's beautiful.
I think later, um, first time you sent some pictures of that as well.
Yeah, so, it's, it's, it's really pretty and, like I said, people use them all the time.
I think we'll see people out there all the time.
Oh, yeah.
We are working on that public art piece that's gonna be in this Genius Park as well, um, so hopefully this spring that'll be out there as well.
I think that'll be nice next to the, next to the wine bar too, the wine garden and all of that, it's perfect.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to have, sorry.
No, you go, you go for it.
I move to have two large outdoor swings built and installed through the woodlawn contract for use in the pocket park in the square. The cost estimate is fifty-five hundred to six thousand and will be funded with unused funds at fiscal year end with any balance from fund balance.
I'll second.
Further, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, I, in favor.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry for.
Alright, I think that's everything for me.
That's it, okay, moving on to my report. Been a little crazy last couple weeks and looks like this week too, so, last week, uh, I had the pleasure of being invited to the State of the State, um, a, addressed by Governor Hogan, um, that was um, very good, then of course, the next day started the mayor's conference. So I was up in Annapolis most of uh, all, all last week, uh, the conference was very good also, um. Let's see then, uh, actually tomorrow, I'm gonna be going to Leonard Town High School for an, if I were mayor, uh, um, little presentation, we'll do a budget presentation with uh, some of the students that are there. And then um, I just got a call a little while ago, uh, Reagan Coons with the, a student at the Tech Center, she's doing a little program for um, um, in their video department, so she wants me to come by there, she's gonna do something with that. I know the sheriff was uh, involved in that, so a different, bunch of different people are involved in that. Um, then of course, later this week, we've got the State of the Town on Friday, hopefully everybody's uh, can make that. And hopefully, will that presentation be able to go to our website afterwards for?
Yeah, we always put it on.
For everyone to be able to see it, okay? And then uh, let's see, oh, I wanted to mention the uh, hotel for the uh, summer conference over in Ocean City, we're looking at options there. So, once we know, we'll, we'll kinda, oh, one question, um, there's some that allow dogs, is anybody gonna be taking a dog with them?
Well, if we can, maybe I will.
The Clarion did.
The Clarion did, so.
We tried the new hotel, but they don't have enough rooms, um, and then some of the rest of them aren't pet friendly, so.
Uh, it's, for me, it's not, yeah, make or break.
So we're looking, looking at our options and, uh, see what, what we can do over there.
Children are allowed.
Okay.
Sometimes this is a healthy.
They're way more distracted.
Sorry kids, you can't go, sorry.
I have to go to Ocean City by myself.
I think that's it, that'll, that's all I had, I think. Uh, Vince Tyler?
All right, so, uh, plans are underway for the second annual Leonard Town Summer Music Festival, um, so announcements will be coming out shortly. Uh, Year of the Woman, a meeting was held between the town, the tourism department, the museum division, and representatives in the fields of business, agriculture, aviation, and technology to discuss ways to recognize and commemorate the Year of the Woman in Leonard Town. Uh, more information will be forthcoming. Uh, the twenty twenty event, uh, season plans are underway, so events will be coming out soon. Um, upcoming events, so the twentieth annual, uh, anniversary of Leonard Town's Earth Day Celebration is Sunday, April nineteenth in Leonard Town Square in the Wharf from twelve thirty P M. to four thirty P M. Uh, Sippin's also, uh, take place February fifteenth at the Port of Leonard Town Winery from six thirty P M. to ten thirty P M. And then upcoming events are the Hospice Run will be Saturday, April eighteenth from eight thirty A M. to eleven thirty A M. Salsa and Sangria will be, uh, April twenty fourth at the Port of Leonard Town Winery from six thirty P M. to eleven P M. And the thirty-fifth Annual Spring Fling Classic Car Show for Hospice will take place at the Leonard Town Square, April twenty sixth from eight A M. to four P M. And that is it for you Vince?
Okay. Thank you very much. Hayden, Community Development and Planning?
I don't have anything to report, I have a, a lot of projects in process. Uh, I think most of you can see as you drive around town, there's a lot of construction and renovation and new houses.
You wanna mention what, um, Connors are trying to do with the, uh, their house on Fenwick Street?
Yeah, so they are gonna be doing small event space. Um, it'll be Airbnb when it's not used for like small meeting space, but they're doing, it'll be in the backyard, they're putting in a good, big gazebo. So if, um, somebody wanted to have a small meeting or a shower, wedding shower, or say somebody wants to get married at the Wharf, they, and, and people wanna get dressed and use the house there. Um, and then they aren't doing any food or anything, they, on site, um, they will have, try to get a liquor license, but, um, they would use local restaurants for catering and, you know, it, it, it'll be, I think, very beneficial to a lot of different, but, uh, businesses. So for, you know, if people wanna do weddings and, um, you know, they can, they can really, uh, push people toward the local, other local businesses.
Is that the house just past Quality Street?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, they just did siding and stuff, it looks really nice.
Yeah, they just redoing it. Donna O'Connor used to have her gift shop there, but then, you know, last few years just been rented to a family. But you said they even picked up a permit for a gazebo in the back?
Yeah, it's a huge gazebo. They were gonna do a tent, but then they got worried if it was about the same cost and it would be, um, you know, have to worry about the weather and taking it up and down. So, um, this will be like a, like we did at the, um, Wharf, the Amish-built gazebo, that kind of look. With the cupola, and they're adding cupola on the house, actually, they, and they have the new fence up and. And they're really working my thoughts on the alleyway improvements and trying, they moved the fence over a little bit so we can have a bigger, um, alleyway there beside, um, Quality Street. So it's gonna, that's gonna be really nice.
Okay, thank you. Kristi, Utilities?
Nothing to mention this month, I'll check on the plant next week.
Okay. Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association?
All right, ma'am, thank you, um, I attended the Maryland Municipal Board of Directors meeting, that was in Annapolis in January. Our next board meeting is, uh, end of April. I know that, and I think, Mary, you're involved in this too, we're trying to, like, I guess redo our S M M A meetings. I think Chesapeake Beach and North Beach wanna combine and we're looking at March, but I haven't heard any further.
And, and actually, we had some discussion over in, um, um, up in Annapolis, um, they're thinking about trying to get a central location to meet each time, say in Mechanicsville area rather than, uh, everyone having to travel, so.
Right, well, that'll be nice.
They're looking at that as an option, so they'll be bringing that up, so.
Are we still hosting March, though?
Um.
I wanna say no, is it right now? I don't know, I do not know, I'll have to look into.
Nothing was brought up about, I, I wasn't even sure, we were, didn't even realize we were hosting in March, so.
Yeah, they've reached out to us, so.
Okay.
As far as I know, we're hosting.
Okay.
Okay. And then the idea with this also is, you know, anybody goes, they pay for their own dinner, so it's not like each location or each, um, town has to provide the.
All right.
Um, maybe we'll.
Yeah, because we were talking about what to, to cater and stuff, so we need to know that soon, personally.
Okay, yep, all right.
Um, I will be attending the state of the town on Friday and also I attended the fire department rescue squad and, um, made the banquet. So again, congratulations to all their new line officers for twenty twenty, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mary, Business Development and Retention?
I don't have anything on business development today, but I did wanna make an observation. Um, I attended the firehouse installation, um, with a couple of us here and, uh, we celebrated Roger Mattingly for the fifty years. And, you know, they took a picture of all the elected officials that were standing up there and there were ten of them up there that were con- you know, congratulating him. And there was one woman standing up there, and that was me. And so I really thought that, you know, that's, that should be a thumbs up for us, for the town council, that Kristi and I, you know, we've got a little bit of diversity here and I was really proud of us that, you know, we had that representation and, um, you know, it's the Year of the Woman, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, good for us, good for Leonard Town.
And that, and that came up in the Year of the Woman meeting because we were talking about different elected officials and, um, and people in supervisory roles and stuff. And so, I, so we definitely talked about, you know, how, that we do have two women on the council.
Yeah, I, I was really proud to stand up there.
Okay, uh, one, I, I knew I had something else, I just got a call from Dr. Metta just before this meeting, wanted to make sure everyone got the, uh, invitation for the, uh, Fly for a Cu- Fly for a Cure, um, on the, uh, when is this, uh, February twenty second? And, uh, make sure everybody's, or see if anybody can go. Um, it's for the students that are, uh, their mission is to cure leukemia, lymphoma, Hodgkin's disease, and melanoma and improve the quality of life of patients and their families, so. If anybody can make it, let, let us know and I'll let him know who's gonna be there, so. Anything else? All right, I would, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment?
Sure move.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.